Okay. Perfect. Welcome, everyone. I now call the September 6th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please bear with us. It's our first meeting with council members attending both remotely and in person, so we're going to see how this goes. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting Agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please stay here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Menke?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For council attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the Agenda is Meeting Agenda Approval. Are there any changes to tonight's Agenda? Seeing none?
Mayor, Councilmember Menke has his hand up.
Ah, I didn't see that. Councilmember Menke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull the April 12th and May 3rd minutes from Consent.
All right. I am going to move public comment ahead of, we're going to do that next, ahead of presentations, reports, and briefings. Can I get a show of hands for everybody that's okay with both of those? All right. Paul, is it okay if I did both of those at the same time?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to public comment. The City has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City Clerk?
Thank you. We had one written comment received from Julie Rodwell, who wrote in regarding inner Main Street and thanking the council for that change. And then we have two peoples here in the audience tonight to speak in person. The first one is Chelsea Barber. So, Ms. Barber, if you'd like to come to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. We'll give you a minute to get up here.
Thank you. My name is Chelsea. I'm a mental health manager for Center for Human Services, which is a nonprofit mental health agency. We're well-established in communities in Linwood, Edmonds, and Shoreline, but we've now opened up an office in Bothell. And so what's unique about Bothell is that we can actually offer free mental health services to Bothell City residents. So I'm just here to spread the word, bring awareness, and hopefully start some partnerships here with the city. We are grant-funded, which is great, and I know there's a lot of need in the community, so I have information for that, as well as my contact information, to spread awareness.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carol Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan?
Good evening. My name is Carol Sullivan. Pardon?
Oh, press here. Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Carol Sullivan, and I reside at 9920 Main Street, which is right across the way at Boulevard Place. You're getting a formal thank you from Julie Rodwell and the Development on Our Doorstep Committee, but you're also getting an informal thank you. So, the last time I spoke to you was June 7th, and I was part of a group of 13 people, residents of Boulevard Place, who felt that east whoops, is a beast. And that west is best. Well, we asked you to reverse. We asked you to reroute. We didn't have to do a lot of screaming and shouting, but we did do a little hokey pokey. And we got what we asked for. So, thank you, City of Bothell, so much for listening to the residents of Boulevard Place. We feel much safer because we asked, you listened, and you acted, and now the buses have been rerouted. We have our Main Street back again, and we want to thank you. So I'm going to leave these little tokens of our appreciation. They're not the usual thank you card, but maybe you'll find an inconspicuous place where you can enjoy them for a little while and check out the signatures and, again, our thanks. And thank you. I'm not sure if there's anyone else in the audience which wishes to speak. If so, please raise your hand and step to the podium. That's all we have.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up, we have Public Engagement Opportunities. All right, September is Puget Sound Starts Here Month. You can take the Puget Sound Starts Here Online Pledge and learn simple ways you can help protect local waterways. You can learn more at bothellwa.gov/PSSH. Bothell is excited to join the regional Adopt a Drain program. I saw a lot about this on social media. Sign up online to adopt a storm drain near you to help prevent flooding and reduce stormwater pollution. And that's bothellwa.gov/AdoptADrain. September is National Preparedness Month. The life you've built is worth protecting. Celebrate Preparedness Month by learning what steps you can take to prepare for disasters. You can learn more at bothellwa.gov/Preparedness. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. Jeff Smith, appreciation. Helping people do public comment here at the last time he's there. All right, whereas Jeff Smith joined the City of Bothell as an Associate Planner on May 11th, 1992, when the city's population was 13,702. And whereas Jeff has honorably served the citizens of Bothell for 30 years, during which time the population has increased to 48,940. And whereas in 1994, Jeff wrecked a city vehicle on Bothell Everett Highway, requiring several months of physical therapy, and probably a new vehicle, where he met a nice physical therapist named Susan, whom he married three years later. And whereas Jeff raised two daughters in the Bothell and North Shore community and impressed them with the projects he was working on throughout the city when driving them to school and after-school activities. And whereas Jeff has provided a calming perspective to many tense development issues to create a win-win situation for the city, staff, developers, and Bothell community. And whereas Jeff provided professional knowledge and care for Bothell's natural environment by championing wetlands, streams, and critical areas mapping inventory. And whereas Jeff was instrumental to the truly farm transformation to the University of Washington Bothell campus. And whereas Jeff worked his way up from the front counter, to Senior Planner, to Development Services Manager, and ultimately to Interim Community Development Department Director. And whereas we celebrate Jeff's invaluable contributions of service and friendship and wish him all the best as he retires from the city and enjoys the next chapter of his life. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor to the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the City of Bothell's appreciation to Jeff Smith for his many contributions to the City of Bothell and our greater community. And, not in the proclamation, but everybody here should know that we had our former Community Development Director leave. Jeff was planning on retiring a little earlier, but he stuck around to help us out. So Jeff, thank you again. Thank you for all your years of service, but particularly this last piece. We couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I'm going to have a physical copy, and if you'd like to say anything, feel free.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of things I would like to say. You guys know me. I usually don't pass up an opportunity to talk. But this is short, and I'll keep it short. First of all, thank you again, Mayor Thompson, members of the council. You guys, I really appreciate the work that you do because you really are the, you're the Board of Directors, right, of this city? And it's important, and we value your inputs like you can't believe. So, thank you very much. It makes our job easier when you guys are as good as you are at what you do. So, thank you again. I've said this to the staff many times, and I'll say it again. For me, public service is a noble calling. It's something that I've worked at since, well, I was exposed to it when I was about 10 years old. My mom was on city commissions in Gary, Indiana, and she used to take me with her to City Hall in the evenings, when she would have evening meetings like this. And I used to sit down the hall and play with the staplers and the paperclips and things like that. But I could hear what was going on down the hall. And I just, it was ingrained in me the value of contribution to community and to the things, the community that we serve. So, I grew up with a very healthy respect for the role of those who dedicated themselves and their careers to public interest, to the community service. And that just, it's stuck with me my entire life. It's been a long time, and I have done a few things, and I appreciate the recognition of some of those things, for sure. The second thing I really wanted to highlight was that I believe very strongly in the commonwealth of our community. The whole is indeed greater than the sum of the parts. The commonwealth of ideas, of communication, of shared experiences allows us to achieve things that might otherwise be impossible. I believe that our commonwealth is sacred, and I think it deserves stewards of the highest caliber. And I believe that Bothell is uniquely blessed to have a staff of such professionals. And it begins with those guys over there that are directors, but all the people they hire, too. And it really, it really shows here, and I think, I think we all have come to know that. Finally, I just want to say practicing land use, planning with honesty, integrity, and an ethical compass will engender success over the long term. Success in the form of a very high quality of life for citizens and businesses, residents and visitors to a community, and success for those who choose to do business here. It's a win-win-win for the commonwealth. And in the end, that's really what's most important to this old cowboy planner. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thought I could through that, but
Thank you, Jeff. And if you want to hang out for a second, Councilmember McNeil has a few things he'd like to say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Jeff, I don't know if you remember the first time we met in 2015? I remember that day very, very well.
Okay.
And I can tell you, when I walked in there and I first met you, I didn't know what to think. But this many, but this many years later, I do know what to think. You have been an amazing asset to this community. You were a straight shooter with me then, and you've been a straight shooter with me the entire time I've been on this council. Council members come and go, which you've been here 30 years. From 13 to 43 is a pretty amazing feat. So, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say thank you from somebody who, it means a lot to have had, to built that friendship with you over these years, that we've been able to become friends and have conversations, open dialogue, even though we think a little differently on some things. You've always been that, that voice and that ear that I feel, I now feel like we're friends. So, thank you for your service to the community of Bothell.
Oh, thank you so much, Councilmember McNeil. I appreciate, James, if I may, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, it's been a good run. It's been a good run. And to be able to retire at 43, who can argue with that, huh?
I was referring to the population, but okay.
All right, well, thank you again. Thank you all. And do good work.
Thank you.
Right.
Planning's a hard life, right? Yeah. All right, next up, we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas each year, National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North, Central, and South America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Spain. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week was expanded in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And as, whereas, the day of September 15th is significant as the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico, Chile, and Belize celebrate their independence days on September 16th, 18th, and 21st, respectively. And whereas we recognize that Hispanic and Latino heritage is American heritage and see their indelible footprints in significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of our city, state, and nation. And whereas we honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latino Americans who live, work, and visit throughout Bothell influence and enrich our community while rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity many still face. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of Bothell and invite all to celebrate the rich diversity of the Hispanic and Latino communities and the many ways they contribute to our society. And I believe we have a Rosio to accept.
Yes. Oh, thank you for reminding me. I'm really very proud of you guys. Sorry, I'm really fast to speak. Hello?
Hello? We can hear you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, thank you. I opened a restaurant in Bothell. Bothell is really special for me because 23 years ago, I built my first house in Bothell. Well, I feel good, right? And Bothell's a great community. My kids went to spring school. So being, being open a restaurant in Bothell, I feel so proud. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for coming here tonight to accept. We appreciate it very much.
No, thank you for the invitation. I feel very proud. Thank you.
Good. All right. Next up, we have a presentation from the King County Regional Homeless Authority, the interlocal agreement update. And City Manager Standard is going to take it from here and introduce our friend Alexis.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And yeah, we, under presentations tonight, we are joined by three different agencies doing two different presentations. And first up is the update from the King County Regional Homeless Authority. And as you mentioned, Alexis Rink is here from, from King County. And she has a brief presentation and some time for any questions from the council. So Alexis, thank you so much for joining us tonight, and take it away.
Well, thank you so much. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I hope everyone had a restful holiday weekend. And have to just quickly say, as a Salvadoran woman, I was so glad to hear tonight's proclamation. So thank you for recognizing Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. So for the record, my name is Alexis Mercedes Rink. I am the Director of Subregional Planning and Equitable Engagement at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Some of you may know me from my previous role at the Sound Cities Association, but it's a pleasure to continue to live out the spirit of that organization and how I operate in this role at the authority. And so I'm here tonight to provide an overview of our work as the authority and to orient you all to some of the latest and greatest on data regarding homelessness in North King County specifically. And then to really start an initial discussion around a proposal that we have on how we can strengthen our partnership as a region to better support and serve our unhoused members. So to take you all a little bit into our core mission, our core mission is to significantly decrease the incidence of homelessness throughout King County, really leaning into principles of equity and social justice. And our core theory of change is that if we create a homelessness response system that centers the voices of those with lived experience, then we'll be able to focus on responding to needs and eliminating inequities in order to end homelessness for all. Our purpose and structure, we were formed through an interlocal agreement between King County and City of Seattle. And within that interlocal agreement, our role, scope, and purpose is really designated as to lead and unify planning of coordination for funding and services for folks experiencing homelessness countywide. So that can include a number of services, which we'll get into, related to things like outreach and shelter, different types of emergency housing. We also lead on and have policy oversight and contract management and performance management. We are the Continuum of Care Lead Agency. These were responsibilities previously held by All Home, if folks were familiar with that. It is something also required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, so we do receive federal funding. We were charged with also creating a brand-new ombuds office to serve as a single point of accountability for folks who may be accessing services. And then we were also charged with establishing clear metrics and milestones for measuring success and ensuring accountability and transparency in our systems. And so this is my favorite graphic that really lays out what ultimately came over to us from the city and county and what still lies within the city and county. And so it's important to distinguish that housing capital and development are things that are not within our purview. Those are still responsibilities held by City of Seattle and King County. However, we lead and have oversight over Continuum of Care-funded programs, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing diversion programs, the Coordinated Entry for All system, which facilitates permanent housing placements. We also oversee and are the administrators of the Homelessness Management Information System. This holds client-level data for folks who may be accessing services. And then we oversee outreach contracts and coordinate with our outreach providers as well to best support folks. We do not lead on encampment claims, so we don't contract for those services specifically. And while we recognize that behavioral health and crisis responses is critical in partnerships, that's not something that we fully own as an agency. We have many other partners at the county that manage those types of responses. And so that's a little bit about our scope and who we are, the unique intersection that we fill in the region. And so going a little bit into some of the work that my team does around really getting deep and understanding what's happening in community, I wanted to bring forward to you all our 2022 North King County Unit and Bed Count. And so what you see here is a distribution of units and beds when looking at our programs, our emergency shelter programs, our permanent supportive housing, permanent housing programs, and transitional housing programs. And so I want to take a minute to distinguish the difference between units and beds. This is particularly relevant for our family shelter providers. A unit often refers to a room, which could have a number of beds in it, but especially when we have family providers. Families come in all different sizes, and so really, a room per se could have, could fit a number of beds in it, but if we assign a room or a unit to a family, it just really varies. And so we capture both numbers in terms of the total amount of beds that our system is able to accommodate for, while also accounting for the units, so the kind of rooms. And so what this amounts to is just shy of 300 beds currently located in North King County subregion. Taking us into a little bit about our service providers currently serving North King County, we have nine service providers. And I want to take a moment to highlight a win in our work, which isn't always often. But as you can see with Camp Unit at the East Side, we don't currently have any beds listed because the sanctioned encampment has seen so much success through the Emergency Housing Voucher Program that a number of folks who were at that sanctioned encampment have secured housing with the voucher and that that encampment is in the process of actually resolving with, with a number of folks now having secured housing. And so the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, which was made available through resources in the American Rescue Plan, provided for about 1,300 emergency housing vouchers to King County. These have 10 years of housing affordability with them, and we coordinated with providers as well as our public housing authorities to be able to have folks effectively use the vouchers. And we are actually leading the nation and having folks lease up successfully with those vouchers now. Another little win to celebrate. And as of last week, I believe we have had over, close to about 60% of folks who have successfully leased up over 900 households. So, really exciting stuff. Taking us a little bit more into looking at the data that we have in terms of client-level data for folks in North King County. We have a data point in our Homelessness Management Information System, so really looking at client-level data where folks can indicate where their city of last residence was. And so according to our HMIS poll of data, in May, we found that 424 folks who were enrolled in HMIS in May, so currently accessing services, marked a North King County city as their last place of residence. And of those 424 folks, only nine of those folks were in some type of permanent housing solution in our system. And for context, again, North King County has 85 units and 143 beds of emergency shelters specifically. And so there are a few caveats about the 400 figure that I do want to uplift. HMIS is only folks that are currently accessing publicly funded services, which can include shelter and day centers, those who have been touched by outreach. And we, we currently know that there is limited outreach currently serving North King County. So that does mean folks who may be experiencing homelessness would be less likely to be interacting with outreach and therefore less likely to be captured by the system. It's also important to note that this question, that not everyone answers this question when they're doing intake of services. And for this figure, this doesn't necessarily mean that folks are accessing resources in North King County. They could be anywhere in King County but have marked a North King County city as our last place of residence. So I share all of this to emphasize that we have reason to believe that this number should be, should be higher when it comes to actual folks who may be experiencing homelessness in North King County. So really treat it as a floor rather than a ceiling when we're talking about homelessness affecting the subregion. And so with, with all of this data in mind, I'd like to lean into the other topic that's bringing me here tonight, which is really how we can strengthen our partnership when it comes to addressing this issue. And so what we're bringing forward tonight for to strengthen our partnership is not necessarily a novel idea. In my work doing subregional planning, we've really looked to and learned from existing subregional collaborations, such as a regional coalition for housing, ARCH, which has had tremendous success in developing affordable housing in, in East. And then also looking at the newer-formed South King County Homelessness and Housing Partners, which is another subregional pooling mechanism to support affordable housing development. So what we've tried to be rooted as much as we can in existing approaches and subregional approaches. We've been working a lot with the North King County Coalition on homelessness. This was originally a task force that was convened to identify space to establish the Oak Shelter, which continues to serve as the only emergency shelter serving single adults in North King County. The purpose of the coalition was to really bridge sectors and jurisdictions in North King County to support policies and community-based efforts to provide services and housing options for folks in North King County who may be experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness. And it includes a government representative from each of the five North King County cities, Bothell, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, Shoreline, and Woodinville. Councilmember Alderks is our Bothell representative. Thank you for your service to the coalition. And the body also includes a number of non-governmental partners. We know we rely on our system partners in doing this work. And so we have faith-based partners. We have behavioral health partners, healthcare partners, service providers, and other emergency responders and our human services advocates as well, who are also a part of the body. And so in working collaboratively with this group, we started to give a timeline as to what's the work that's gone behind the proposal that we're bringing forward tonight. We started the conversation in January and February, particularly with city staff from North King County cities to discuss what are avenues for improving our partnership and better supporting folks. We came before the, the North King County Coalition on Homelessness to present before the body the concept of what would it mean to pool funding through an interlocal agreement in the, among the North King County cities. We received some guidance and feedback from the coalition and then spent time in April and May revealing and incorporating that feedback into our proposal. We then took that revised proposal and North King County staff co-presented with myself the proposal for a North King County interlocal agreement, really to pool funding going to homelessness response. And we had unanimous affirmation from the coalition to move forward, which is what brings me here really tonight. We have conducted a series of presentations to all of the North King County city councils. You all are our final council presentation in the first round, and we've successfully presented to all the councils. And so what we'd really like to discuss tonight, our proposal, is we'd like to bring forward the idea and begin the conversation around what would it mean for North King County cities and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority to be partnered through pooled and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority to be partnered through pooled funding. We know many cities grant funding to their local service providers. Many of those service providers are already contracted with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. We all want to be working towards the same outcomes and be aligned in our goals. And more than that, as the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, we want to be a resource to jurisdictions in your homelessness response. So overall, we believe that through pooling funding on homelessness response, we can improve transparency, efficiency and accountability, really to ensure we're having a more effective response to homelessness. And especially when it comes to addressing homelessness that may be happening in North King County. And so I'd like to talk through these three areas first and then go into the mechanics of the agreement. So to start us off with transparency, in what we have before you, we would be providing an annual report to city councils, including metrics such as that HMIS origin city data that I shared a little bit earlier, while also talking and presenting on our North King County subregional outcomes and activities. So how successful are, have we been, what kind of services and programs are operating or expanding? While then also providing updates on our progress of funding administration and distribution with a promise that we're always happy to accommodate additional council presentations, the reports per request. Moving into also looking at efficiency, as mentioned earlier, are, in our current system, we hold a number of contracts with the service providers that are currently already serving the North King County subregion. And so we have an opportunity here to ease some administrative burden for providers and public funders. Just one less system to navigate, one less login password to remember, one less funding process and having really streamlined funding and contract management. So a single framework for guiding our investments and services. It should be recognized that as the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, we have a contract management team where we have staff members that work to oversee agencies' contracts. And so we have team members that are already working with North King County service providers here. So we are really looking at a solution that can provide for a bit more efficiency. And in the last area, we really want to ensure that we are being accountable to our partners. And we believe that an interlocal agreement among the North King County cities and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority will support improved accountability, really through defining our relationship between us as an agency and our partnering cities, while then also providing that reporting on funding distribution and further having improved metrics. With much greater confidence, we will be able to share what the impact of all public funding was for the North King County subregion. And that's a level of alignment and clarity that this region has not yet experienced yet. So overall, we are really looking to, to be a resource, both on the data front, while also supporting with any potential projects. So at this point, you might be wondering what the mechanics of this agreement would look like. And so we are looking at, when we're looking at pooling funding, we recognize that there are a number of cities, such as the city of Bothell, that are already contributing funding to local service providers. And so in our proposal for the upcoming budget cycle, 2023 to 2024, whatever funding and allocations that you all decide to make to your local service providers, those funding allocations would be maintained. So to be very, very clear, we're not talking about new dollars. We are not seeking additional funding from the city of Bothell. We want to honor your current investments into homelessness response, but look at being the administrators of those dollars to create for some, a more streamlined process. Beyond that point, for 2025 to 2026, city council, we would then be looking at a general fund allocation with awards being a part of the King County authorities' particular system, while ensuring that those funding awards will be made in alignment with our North King County subregional plan. We also recognize that there are a few North King County cities that are currently not contributing this, this particular kind of funding per se. And so we've determined a per capita average based on the average of our currently contributing North King County cities. And this amounts to about an investment of $1.20. And so we have been in conversation with some of the other North King County cities about contributing funding of this kind. And so with this agreement, we could be looking at some additional funding coming to homelessness services if we do move forward, which is quite exciting. Taking us to where do the dollars go? We have maintained and will continue to maintain that funding that will be pooled amongst the North King County cities will be maintained within the North King County subregion to ensure that North King County residents have access to services. And so want to be quite deliberate about that point. We want to maintain, if not expand, services for folks in North King County. So we would ensure that dollars pooled in North King County would be maintained, serving North King County. And when we look at local authority, to reiterate for the 2023, 2024 funding year, cities that make funding awards, whatever cities decide in their upcoming budget processes, those awards will be maintained in amount, but the contract would shift over in the new year to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, where then those dollars would just be administered, but funding awards would stay the same. And the final element, what we're looking at is a four-year agreement covering the next two financial years. And beyond that, the other notable element to uplift is we've currently been discussing for parties a 60-day written notice of withdrawal for other parties of the agreement. And so in many ways, I'm coming for you tonight in the hopes to start this conversation. I'm eager to hear any and all feedback and just hopeful about what you all, feedback you have for us on this proposal. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, before you're opening it up for questions for Alexis, and Alexis, thank you again for joining us. Great overview and I'm glad, I know now you are well rehearsed. But I also just wanted to contextually remind everyone too, that our interim assistant city manager Becky Range is here and she's been the representative from the city who's been participating in these conversations with other agencies too. So if you do have any questions or anything that you'd like to see from the city side, Becky is here taking notes and probably can answer a question or two as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Zions.
Quick question that first springs to mind and any questions I forget to ask, I'm counting on you guys to ask. So I don't have to ask for a round two. Thank you for the presentation, Alexis. I'm trying to make sure that I understand correctly what, what you're offering to do. What you're offering to do is to be the administrator of funding that Bothell was already doing with a four-year agreement. Is that right? Is that correct? And then if there is, if we want feedback and an understanding of our Bothell residents that are being served, you would be available to come and do reports. Is that the, is that the front and the back end of the, of what you presented? Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alexis. This is a great presentation. I had a couple of questions. One is like a big picture one and then another one is about the presentation. The big picture one, which probably relates to the slide of the beds versus service provider slide. Like what, how big is this homelessness problem? I know it's hard to quantify, but, because you may have talked about metrics and success metrics and all that and we're all metrics driven people, like how do you know you're being successful at chipping away at the problem? And then the part B of that question is like, how does that relate to that slide that you showed the, you know, all the service providers? And then the beds that are there, if they're related at all?
All right. That's a fantastic question. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. So we have a few different ways where we try and really measure the scale of the problem when it comes to our community that may be experiencing homelessness. There's one way that maybe folks are familiar with, which is often called the point in time count. Historically, this has been an effort where community members will go out usually during an evening in January and count folks that may be sitting outside. That's, that's one method to be able to try and capture how many folks may be experiencing homelessness. In the past year, we used a, a different method to try and capture that number by conducting interviews and then using a methodology used by the World Health Organization to do statistical modeling based on that. All of that to say, our 2022 estimated figure for those who may be experiencing homelessness at a given point in time is about 13,000 individuals in King County. So that's, that's one number to keep in mind. Another number to keep in mind when it comes to the scale of the problem is a recent data effort that was undergone by Department of Community Human Services arts team, really to look at all of the administrative data sets that we have. I talked a little bit about our homelessness management information system, but we also have with the county, this entity called Healthcare for the Homeless Network that also captures their own data. It's a healthcare team that works with folks who may be experiencing homelessness. We also have the Behavioral Health Recovery Division and they have their own data set as well, where they do have indicators that ask folks who, about whether or not they may be experiencing homelessness. So we have these three big data sets and a mindful data effort was undergone to crop, swap all those data sets and essentially do like a Venn diagram to see who's being captured in two systems, who's being captured in all three systems, who's just captured in one. All of that lead up to say, throughout that effort, the team found that across those three data sets in 2020, over 40,000 different, different people in King County were marked homeless in one of those systems. So I offer those two numbers to you and I'm happy to follow up with additional information and invite you all to check out our, our data dashboards on our website that offer some more timely information about exits to permanent housing. But those are two numbers to ground you on the, the scale of the number.
Thank you. That's helpful. I understand it's hard to come up with a concrete number. I mean, those numbers in different systems and different organizations measure things differently. How do we know, like about that slide that you showed earlier? You know, the number of beds and even the slides that your organization, the number of beds versus, and units that you offer. You mentioned something about 300 beds slash units. And if we're talking about, you know, if we take the average of the 40K and the 13K, 25K people, I mean, we don't seem to even have enough, you know, organizations doing another, what are, what are your plans on doing that? Like we fund this for four years, how do we know that we're getting close to the 25K number?
Right. How are we going to evaluate our success that we're making progress? It's, it's a fantastic question and one that will be supported by a amazing tool that we're developing right now with Microsoft, which is called our By Name List. I wish I had more time tonight. We have a lot of projects to talk about as an agency. The By Name List is exactly that. It is a, it's a different way of data management wherein anybody accessing services quite literally has a file much more akin to chronic health records that would then have portability from provider to provider, which would allow us to better understand where folks are. As I stated earlier, with that number I shared on the North King County figure, we, I couldn't tell you right now where each of those individuals are at this moment, be able to run that. But with the By Name List, we will be able to and better understand where folks are and where they may be going around the county to access services. And so with that improved data system, we'll be able to better understand that. It's really the fact that right now in our region, the services are disparate and they're around and they, and we have a lot of folks that will travel to access them. So it can make it in a number of ways challenging to be able to speak to with confidence and try and address some, some matters about service access. But with the, that data system coming online and we have work underway, that will be supportive here in better measuring and looking at subregional outcomes. While we're also then expanding what it means to have active engagement with folks who may be experiencing homelessness in North King County to tell us their own stories themselves about what is working and what they're seeing. And so we're trying a number of new methods, while then also working with outreach providers to be monitoring and looking at how many folks may be experiencing unsheltered homelessness, but hoping to come forward actually with some improved modeling numbers around housing need before the end of the year, because we know that, we know we need affordable housing for a number of folks. Housing and homelessness. And so we are really looking at also, you know, what are the things we can advocate or work with partners on when it comes to housing development.
That's awesome. And thank you. Thank you. This is very helpful. I, you know, look forward to diving deeper into this whole topic. The last question I have is how much of the funding goes to administrative versus services actually offered? Or beds or whatever, you know, the units are?
Fantastic question. For this agreement that we're talking about here, we are not taking out an administrative fee. We're looking at distribution of the funds.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. And hello, Alexis. Thank you so much for coming to present to us. It's, it's really exciting to see the work of the last several months all put together, these conversations turning into these presentations. And so thank you for being here. One of the successes I wanted to kind of point to was what you, what you said about the number of people who've been able to access vouchers. And I know that that has been a specific challenge where people have vouchers, but they're not able to find units that they can use their vouchers in. And so could you speak for a minute on, on what has been successful in helping people be able to put their vouchers to use and get into housing?
Thank you so much for that. And so I wanted to, I pulled up my updated notes on this. And so we, as a region, received, to be specific, 1,314 vouchers through the American Rescue Plan with the emergency housing voucher program. And as a region, we have effectively had 1,001 households leased up effectively using their voucher, which is just really exciting, 10 years of housing affordability. And we have been actually beating the national lease up rates. The national lease up rate right now is 44% and King County right now is at 76%. And with that, you might be wondering, well, what's, what's the secret right here? And what, we used a little bit of a different strategy when it came to allocation of referral slots. And so working directly with homeless service providers to be identifying folks and then accompanying and working with providers as they were navigating, working with our public housing authorities. Pardon me, the sun just came out, so it's this way. Apologies. Working with our public housing authorities of partners. We also have amazing resources in this region like Housing Connector, which is our local landlord liaison project, which has been an active part in helping folks secure housing with those. But frankly, we, as an agency, also are interested in doing a deep recession with partners to better understand what were kind of the, the other strategies that maybe we didn't entirely see that further helped folks lease up. To provide some more further context, when we look at our other part, like peer cities, so like LA, San Francisco, New York, those continuum of cares have an average lease up of 24%. So again, to underlie like having a lease up of 76% in this area is just really astounding and something that this community should be really excited about. But happy to come back with more about what our, our secret behind our success has been.
Well, thank you so much. And I know that, well, I will look forward to that presentation when you come to NUSA and the King County Homelessness Coalition meetings with that. And also Deputy Mayor, I hope you're jealous because this is the kind of like cool data that we get to dig into every month. And so if you ever want to be alternate for me, it's a really good medium and I really highly recommend it.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see you, Alexis. It's been a while. Congrats on the new, new gig there. Doing amazing work. I had some questions around what, what Bothell's currently contributing and where we're pulling those funds from. Is that coming from human services? Can you speak to that a little bit or maybe?
Alexis, I think I might be able to better speak to that if you're okay with that. So as you're aware, we do a human services grant program every budget cycle. And so I think the easiest way to explain it is to really think about the nonprofit perspective. So right now, we fund very clearly about $52,000 to $58,000 to support homelessness programs and a couple of different nonprofits. So if you think about those nonprofits, say, for example, if we give money to Lake City Partners to support their shelter. So instead of Lake City Partners having to have five different contracts with the five cities, we just take that same amount of money, give it to the authority and now that shelter has one contract to worry about. But there's also some other grant costs that probably indirectly or maybe even directly support homelessness in a much larger amount. But it's going to take us a little bit more time to kind of. but it's going to take us a little bit more time to kind of parse that out. But it's a part of your grant program that's already in the general fund each biennium.
Okay, so it's a general fund.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And it sounds like this may be the answer to administration work to help us be more fiscally responsible with our dollars and streamline the process for giving those awards, those grants out. Is that correct?
Absolutely. It does make us a little bit more efficient. It cuts down that contract administration that I mentioned. And I think it really is better for some of the service providers. It's more helpful for them, as Alexis mentioned, to work with the one contract that's funded by the five different cities instead of working with all of our different offices. And we don't always have that staffing available. So we're very supportive of the efforts that are happening here.
Great. Thank you. And when we talk about the five cities, I think I heard that one or more than one may not be funding this. Is that correct? Or did I mishear that?
I think what Alexis was mentioning is that maybe those cities weren't currently making investments through their human services grant funding to directly support homelessness. But in the future, they would be doing it with this coalition and pull funding. Am I correct, Alexis?
Correct.
Okay, it'd be good to see that we're all contributing equally amongst all of our cities. That would lead me into ensuring and making sure that our dollars are helping those in need within our community. We do want to do work regionally and help. This is a regional issue. It's not a city of Bothell issue. But we do want to ensure that we're, at least we have some, you know, space for the folks that live in the city of Bothell and that we're managing how and who we're helping in our own community. Which then leads me into that technology that Alexis was alluding to. And that perked me up quite a bit because I think, for me, being on a lot of regional committees, some of the things that we talk about is the understanding where we are, where we're going and where we came from. And so to me, the information that I'm looking for is what's changing? Why are people homeless in the first place? And looking at those trends and seeing how we can somehow get in front of those trends? Because it's one thing to get a person out of homelessness, but if we're not looking at why they became homeless in the first place and don't find ways to stop that in the future, it's just going to be a continual cycle. So hopefully, the new technology that you're looking at with Microsoft, I think you alluded to, will help us track that. It will help us track the types of homelessness. I think you've heard me speak about this often, that homelessness looks different in different communities. It doesn't, it's not one shoe size fits all. We have, you know, youth that are homelessness. We have, you know, seniors that are homelessness. And so it's important that we understand those trends and where those trends are happening across our communities. So hopefully, that technology will help with that. And then on the reporting, as far as the administration piece, this might be for Alexis. Is this going to be something that's done by annual, annually, quarterly? How do you, how do you see doing this? And is it going to be to individual councils or is it going to be to the five cities? Is it a combo? How is that gonna, how do you see that happening, playing out?
It's a great question. We would be looking at biannually, given the nature of our cities, just budget cycles. And so we'd be looking at this upcoming biennium. You would likely then see us come back again in 2024, for the 2024, 2025 year, to put forward an informed recommendation on approximately, just based on scale of need, what we estimate a local contribution could look like amongst the North King County cities. Also then, taking into account, we'd be layering in additional federal, state, and county resources into that.
Okay, fabulous. And then lastly, I guess I'd just say that if we're doing this in the north end, what are we doing in the south end around our region? And how can those subregional partners partner together? And how does that look to ensure that when we have these conversations as north end cities, that we're also looking at the south end cities or working with them? To me, that would be an important thing to make sure that the data shows that's set around all of King County. I would just say that homelessness in King County is, there's no border, right? So we also serve Snohomish County and to ensure that our Snohomish County residents and those in the north end also have services available, I think is important. So thank you again for your presentation. Amazing work and look forward to learning more about this.
All right. I don't see anybody else. So I just have one question to finish up. In your presentation, you mentioned that our allocations for the, I think it was 2324 budget, would stay the same with the providers we're working with right now. What happens in 2526 to those dollars?
Fantastic question. So we would be coming forward to you as the King County Regional Homelessness Authority with a recommendation around amount. We would be, I mean, I imagine by that time, you'd be working with myself, my team, and we would have been bringing forward, brought forward a lot of information around North King County need, housing projections and so on. And we would be making a recommendation that we would be looking at a set aside amount by North King County cities.
Okay, so that's something that we could have a conversation about then, just because if we've got existing relationships with organizations that we want to continue supporting, there wouldn't be a reason that we couldn't keep doing that.
Necessary, no.
Okay, cool.
Something that we've been deliberate about in this agreement is we don't want to get in the way of relationships. We know that service providers have strong relationships with the jurisdictions that have supported them, often from the get-go, from the start. And so we don't want to stand in the way of relationships on that front. But we are of the belief that there could be some tremendous administrative benefit in this agreement. But want to honor those relationships too.
Awesome. Well, Alexis, thank you so much for your time. It was really good to see you. And we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right, Mayor. So our second presentation is a two for one. It's quite the deal. And so joining us at the table tonight are going to be four staff members, two from Washington State Department of Transportation and two from Sound Transit. We're going to be doing a joint presentation around an update on the 404-5 North End Improvement and Sound Transit Bus Rapid Transit Implementation. So joining us tonight from WashDOT are Barrett Hanson and Robert Woke. And then from Sound Transit, we're being joined by Bernard Van de Kamp and Rick Kapka. So with that, I think WashDOT goes first and I'll let you take it away. I think as soon as we have the presentation up and ready to share, the cameras will roll. I feel like we should have a musical interlude for everyone, but.
Is that not something you can provide for us?
There was once upon a time.
Okay.
I think for our two council members who are watching remotely, we're trying to help WashDOT be able to present from their computer. I think there's some Zoom handoff issues going on here. So we're, Robin and Laura are expertly guiding, of course.
Looks like progress. Great. Can you put on presentation mode? As Mayor Thompson had pointed out early on, there might be technical issues this evening as we have our first in-person meeting. So thank you again for inviting us here tonight. I'm Rob Wick. I'm the Deputy Program Administrator for the I-405 SR-167 mega program underneath the Department of Transportation. With me tonight is Barrett Hanson. He's the Engineering Manager for our program. And we're joined tonight by Sound Transit as well, who will share our presentation.
Good evening. We'll cover the second half of this presentation, but I'm Bernard Van de Kamp, the Program Executive for the Stride Bus Rapid Transit Program. And I'm joined this evening by the Deputy Program Executive, which is Rick Kapka. So we'll join you shortly.
Great. Thank you, Bernard. So on the WashDOT agenda tonight, we're going to break this into two pieces. I'll take the first half, which is essentially a big picture view of what our program is. We've got effectively about a 20-year history as a mega program for the Department of Transportation, delivering I-405 and a big portion of SR-167. And then we'll hand it off to current projects and Bert will take that and give you project updates. And then after that, we'll be followed by Sound Transit. Great. And so I'm going to get into quite a few numbers here. Feel free to ask questions. We're hoping to take questions at the end as a combination both Sound Transit and WashDOT since we're here in partnership. So this corridor is important to the region and the state. I-405 and SR-167 form a multimodal corridor with 50 miles of reliable express toll lanes that are choice to use when needed most. Also provides the infrastructure for the bus rapid transit and car pools. The I-405 Master Plan and SR-167 Corridor Plan are foundational documents that guide the program. Bothell's been a partner for WashDOT and provided critical feedback on the Master Plan as a member of the Executive Advisory Group. Thank you for your participation. The main purpose of our program is to deliver a comprehensive strategy to reduce traffic congestion, improve mobility and safety performance, accommodate planned regional growth, and enhance the quality of life for the environment and the communities we serve in the corridor. Together, this 50-mile corridor forms a viable alternative to Interstate 5, moving people and goods through the Puget Sound Region. It's also part of the Strategic Highway Network for the Department of Defense. The plan is a multimodal, multi-agency plan with more than 150 individual but coordinated projects. And as you can see from the percentages on the slide, we're making significant progress toward the completion of our Master Plan with plenty more work on the horizon. WashDOT is active in statewide and regional efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve multimodal choices. And the I-405 SR-167 program is part of those efforts with our work to bring integrated multimodal solutions to the corridor that are aimed at keeping people moving. We're excited to have 95% of our 50-mile express toll lane system completed or funded because this system will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions by decreasing the level of stop and go conditions, thereby conserving fuel. The express toll lanes project would also promote more efficient energy use by moderating speeds. Decreased vehicle delay at on and off ramps would further reduce collisions and promote more efficient driving. Moreover, we're proud that we're at 70% completion for transit center expansions, 91% for bus rapid transit stations, 62% for transit service increases, 138% of planned spaces for parking right expansion, and 65% completion for ped and bike improvements. By bringing more reliable transit options to the corridor and integrating bus rapid transit into our express toll lane system, we have the opportunity to reduce the number of cars on the highway at peak hours, thereby reducing emissions and improving travel times. In addition to our efforts around multimodal integration and express toll lanes, we're moving forward on our efforts to improve traffic flow in the corridor. Currently, we're at 50% completion of local arterial movements, 55% completion of funding of adding two additional lanes in each direction, and 35% completion funding of direct access and direct connectors. While we still have a ways to go, our program is working hard to see the Master Plan to completion. The vision is for an express toll lane and bus rapid transit system to help us manage traffic demand through a variety of modes. And collectively, being WashDOT, Sound Transit, local agencies, and transportation partners, we've been delivering on that Master Plan vision. Let's move forward to the next slide. As I mentioned in the previous slide, we aim to deliver a reliable north-south alternative to Interstate 5. We look at this 50-mile corridor from a system-wide perspective and consider the performance of individual projects to the whole system as we deliver funded projects. The express toll lanes have been so popular that we've had revenue to build an additional project. We're on track to deliver the next series of projects funded by bonded toll revenue until, as we're all aware, COVID hit. So I think you're probably aware, when you're relying heavily on funding on bonded toll revenue and the toll lanes are just the same as general purpose because everybody's teleworking, our revenues dropped, which causes some funding issues. So we've continued to work with Sound Transit on a plan to move forward. They then had a realignment process and the state legislature had their own process. Now, thanks to additional funding from our partners, we're back on track to deliver projects for our community. In addition to express toll lane funding, there are a number of culverts along the corridor in need of future repair. We will continue to partner with WDFW and the Makoshu Dainin Tribe to move forward with environmental improvements. There's a lot of information on this slide, but essentially what you're going to see here is the series of funding for our program since the inception of the Master Plan 20 years ago. So guided by our Master Plan vision, this mega program has worked hand in hand with our community partners to bring meaningful improvements to I-405 and SR-167. We value our partnerships across the region and look forward to continue our efforts for years to come. To date, there's been roughly $4 billion invested in the I-405 SR-167 corridor. WashDOT has delivered approximately $2 billion over the last 15 years, with $2 billion additional to be delivered in the next five years. These projects will have been advancing through environmental and preliminary design. And in 2019, the legislature passed Senate Bill 5825, which provided funding for five critical projects, including the 522 to 527 express toll lane project, Renton to Bellevue widening express toll lane project, the SR-167 Master Plan update, the SR-167 express toll lane extension to SR-410 and SR-512, and the North 8th Street Direct Access Ramp Project in Renton. In 2021, with the passage of Senate Bill 5165, the legislature expanded funding to six additional projects, including the Northeast 85th Street In-Line Station Project. And now in '22, the legislature's passage of the Move Ahead Washington Funding Package and House Bill 1990, which allows for sales tax deferral, has put us in a position to deliver these projects. We entered the 2022 legislative session with a substantial funding gap associated with the COVID impacts that I previously mentioned. As you can see on the left side of the screen, our total funding for six active projects totaled approximately $1.178 billion. However, due to those COVID impacts, the Treasurer's Office performed an analysis in December of '21 at the request of WashDOT. It showed there would be a gap in available revenue to bond off of, essentially showed a gap of approximately $450 million in order to deliver those previously allocated projects. That's why on the right side of the screen, you'll see that the 405-167 Corridor Financial Plan Report was put together as an answer to legislative proviso. There were actually two provisos. What we found in that report was that we had a funding gap of that approximately $450 million and needed the legislature to act in 2022 in order to move forward on the project timelines that had been previously approved. Thank you. And that brings us to the '22 legislative session, which filled the $450 million gap by passing the '22 supplemental transportation budget that I previously mentioned, as well as the Senate Bill 1990, or House Bill 1990, which allowed for a $70 million sales tax deferral. So we got $380 million directly from the Move Ahead Washington package. You take the $380 million with the $70 million tax deferral and you get to the $450 million funding gap essentially being filled. So with that funding secured, we're now ready to move forward on a multimodal focused project that will connect communities and build a more sustainable transportation system. The delivery schedule on the bottom portion of the screen shows projects that can move forward as a direct result of the Move Ahead Washington package. And now I'm going to pass it over to Barrett, who is going to talk through project updates.
Sure. Thanks, Rob. So Rob gave you an overview of the program's perspective. We want to talk about some of the current projects that'll be starting construction soon or have just started construction. So the three main projects we wanted to come here and give you an update tonight on are all obviously focused on the north end of the corridor, starting with the Brick Hill to 527 Improvement Project, which is in partnership with Sound Transit, the Northeast 132nd Street Interchange Project, and then the Northeast 85th Street Interchange and In-Line Station Project, which is also in partnership and funded by Sound Transit. So the picture on the left, you're going to see a rendering of the future Northeast 132nd Street Interchange Project right on the north part of Kirkland and that Total Lake area. And that is a project that we just started, we just broke ground earlier this year and had a groundbreaking ceremony in May. And really what that project does is it adds a new interchange to provide access, improved access into the Total Lake Regional Growth Center. And so it constructs a new on-ramp from 132nd Street to northbound 405 and then the corresponding off-ramp from southbound 405 to 132nd Street. And at the ends of those ramp terminals, it would construct two roundabouts that helps with lower long-term maintenance and really helps improve traffic flow. As part of the project, it's more not just all about the vehicles. It also provides some enhanced sidewalks and bicycle lanes to help with that kind of multimodal and the active transportation use through the interchange. And then finally, it also includes replacing a fish barrier, like Rob mentioned earlier, that a lot of our programs on 405 have for improving enhancements for the environment. And that will actually open up about 3,000 feet of upstream new habitat for fish. And we would anticipate. And we would anticipate the opening of that traffic around the end of next year is when we anticipate opening that for, for traffic. And then the right-hand side page is a rendering of our Northeast 85th Street Interchange that we're currently actively in procurement, selecting a design builder. And so what that project does is it takes what's currently an existing 70s kind of style two-level cloverleaf interchange and brings it up more to a modern multimodal interchange. So now it's constructed as a three-level interchange with the top level still being I-405. The middle level, which is about the same level as where 85th is today, would be for active transportation, so pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and then also provides an express toll and direct access. And then we actually lower 85th, and so we have the main vehicular travel down on that bottom level to serve the 85th through traffic and then also the general purpose on-and-off ramps to 405. So really trying to separate a lot of the cars from the active transportation and the BRT patrons. And like I said, we're actively in procurement of that and we hope to have a design builder selected and going early next year and open to traffic in 2026. And now for the project that's more within the city of Bothell, we want to talk about our 405 Brickyard to 527 Improvement Project. And this is a project that's had a lot of stakeholder support through the years and as Rob mentioned, is built, supported in that, providing that additional funding in the most recent legislative sessions. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is a partnership with Sound Transit as part of that funding, as we're building both improvements to the express toll lane system and then complementary improvements in providing infrastructure for the BRT system that Bernard and Rick will talk about later. So what that project does is it extends the dual express toll lanes that currently end just south of 160th and extends it up to the Canyon Park interchange. So we'll have a two-line express toll lane system, providing that speed and reliability benefits for express toll lane users in transit up to Canyon Park. It'll build new direct access ramps and inline stations at both the SR-522 and Canyon Park interchanges, provides connection to those urban growth centers and also additional transit nodes along the corridor. In addition, that does build some different bike and pet and active transportation improvements and then addresses six fish barriers as well. So we'll kind of walk through a few renderings of each of those interchanges. And so this is looking at a rendering of the brick, future Brickyard inline station and to orient people, kind of north is to the upper right. The Brickyard parking right is kind of in the upper left, and you can kind of see 160th where it crosses over the freeway in the upper right as well. So what you can see is if you picture what's currently out at like the Mountain Lake Terrace inline station is an inline station in the meeting of 405 that is served by transit-only ramps to BRT stations in the middle, and then having pedestrian connections both directions connecting to both sides of 405, kind of to the, to the west to the Brickyard parking ride, and then to the east of the 155th Street and some of those, the community and the trail, Toll Hill or Toll Hill Trail over there. As we look at the 522 interchange and direct access, again, just orient people as north is to the top of the page, and the UW Bothell Cascadia College is in the upper left-hand corner. And so obviously, as you, I'm sure you're all well aware of, there's a lot of existing bridge columns and everything within the interchange that makes adding to express toll lanes and these direct access rather complicated. So really, we took a practical solution approach of how can we best provide these additional, additional infrastructure through the interchange? And so how we're doing that is providing actually a new northbound 405 that's further to the east, that actually opens up the median for that direct access ramps and the inline station stops for the 405 BRT station. And then for southbound 405 to add that second express toll lane, what is currently southbound 405 will turn into the general purpose lanes of the future southbound 405. And then actually, what's northbound 405 today would be the southbound express toll lanes. And then as we look kind of in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a note to the SR-522 hub and BRT stations. So the project will actually construct a transit hub as part of the interchange to really serve as the connection point and the transfer point between the 522 and 405 BRT systems. So you'll have that transfer between the two BRT systems. In addition to that, it constructs pedestrian connection over to the North Creek Trail, which will connect to both the Seminole River Trail and to the UW Bothell Cascadia Campus. And also, as a final part of that transit hub, it'll have some pickup and drop-off facilities for people to drop off and pick up different transit patrons. And finally, as we go up to the Canyon Park SR-527 interchange, again, north is looking to, to the top, and then you can kind of see the Canyon Park parking right in the upper right-hand corner. So as I mentioned, this builds, we came up with this concept in partnership with the city of Bothell and the transit agencies through several workshops. What this project will construct now is a direct access that actually connects to 17th Avenue Northeast, so actually connecting to, just to the south of the parking right. And then that will lead you over to SR-527. So with that inline, that direct access, we'll have inline stations along those ramps, kind of like you see at 128th and Totem Lake, and that provides that connection over to the Canyon Park parking right where they can transfer to the Community Transit Swift Station or other transit where they parked at the parking right. And this is just the first phase at this interchange and as we work through what's the right concept, we're also accommodating in the future and as part of the master plan of the full connection and over to the, the west side of the interchange with a few, for connecting to that direct access ramp. So eventually it could have a full connection across 405. Okay, I'm turning back over, Rob.
Yeah, great, thank you. Now we're going to hand it over to Sound Transit. Just a clarifying point, I know we get into a lot of transportation lingo, and I'm sure the council understands this, but for anybody else who's curious, the projects that Barrett are talking about are all either in active construction or are funded for construction and will be in construction soon. So these aren't, you know, long-distance things that we can look forward to, these will be happening very soon. Sound Transit?
Great, thank you, Rob. Again, I'm Bernard Van de Kamp, I'm the program executive at Sound Transit for the stride BRT program. We often can present for one another. We're so familiar with each other's projects on 405, and I know that's the main focus this evening, but we also have bus rapid transit being planned and we're preparing for the 522 corridor. And then, of course, there's also bus based north in Canyon Park. So I want to run you through that, but again, I wanted to introduce Rick Kapka, who will be a familiar face to all of you in the future. He's really leading up the projects that we are delivering ourselves at Sound Transit. Barrett and Rob mentioned a number of projects we're making contributions to on 405, there are other staff that are working very closely with WashDOT on that, but really wanted to give some familiarity to Rick's face this evening. You'll be hearing from him quite a bit in the future as we move forward. So for this evening's presentation, I'd like to just orient you with what we're doing with the stride bus rapid transit program, describe some of the elements, and really emphasize these partnerships, as I mentioned, with WashDOT and with the city. We've been working very closely with your staff for the last three or four, five years now, preparing for construction. And then I wanted to give you a brief look ahead before we, we jump into your questions and so forth. So generally speaking, we have about 45 miles of bus rapid transit that we are planning and building right now. Some of it was recently completed. We are targeting an opening of 2026 through 2027. That's per our board's direction. It will be opened up in three independent lines that will all interact with one another. The first is, we're referring these, to these as S1, S2, and S3. The S1 line will serve Burien to Bellevue. Two will go Bellevue to Linwood. And then the one they're likely most familiar with is the S3 line that will run from essentially UW Bothell, that hub that Barrett described at 405, out to the new light rail station in South Shoreline. It's important to look at this as part of the broader transit network. You're likely aware that light rail is being extended up to Everett as part of our current program, down to Tacoma, and is currently under construction to Redmond. We will be providing transfers in Linwood, in Shoreline, Tukwila, and also Bellevue to the light rail system. All right. So in, what is bus rapid transit? What we're trying to build is a system that essentially replicates light rail-like service in terms of the physical infrastructure and then also the type of service. So we will be operating bus rapid transit on the corridors at a minimum of 10-minute frequencies during the peak hours and 15 minutes off-peak. On the 522 corridor, we're expecting to have that even more frequent. And then the span of service, we will be running this 19 hours a day, Monday through Saturday. So similar to our light rail system that operates on those same hours, we need to shut down for cleaning and maintenance and so forth for a few hours in the middle of the night. And on Sunday, we are also going to be operating with high frequencies for a long span of service, 17 hours. Our, our fleet and stations, again, I wanted to note that we are building this with very high quality with permanence in mind. So this is a high-capacity transit investment that is viewed in the same way as a light rail investment. It is permanent, it will be there for decades, if not longer. So we are building this to the same level of quality and really have the passenger in mind. How is this going to work for passengers? How is it going to be convenient? Folks shouldn't have to think about how to use it, so we are going to be providing state-of-the-art passenger information at the stations. We will have off-board fare payment for the most part. Most of our passengers use the Orca card currently, and we expect that to be even more the case in the future. But we do want to allow for cash payment, which will handle on the vehicles itself. We will accommodate bicycles on the coaches, and in some locations, there will be bicycle storage on-site. So we're, this is all about convenience and again, frequency, we want to have this running so frequently that folks don't need to consult a schedule to know when the next bus is coming. So on the upper right on the screen is a representation of what a station will look like. This is very similar to what you would see at a Link at Grade Station. Some of the features in the far, kind of in the distance on the graphic is what we're referring to as the totem. It's, it's similar to what you see with SWIFT, with community transit, kind of a marker to let folks know, here's where the station is. And in the station itself, it will be well-lit, it will have facilities for those that are waiting, and then again, the passenger information that will be updated in real time. In terms of our fleet, we are going to be using two types of coaches. On the S3, the 522 corridor, we will be using articulated coaches. So these are the 60-foot coaches, and we are committing to battery electric buses on the corridor. This is the first for Sound Transit. There is frankly a bit of anxiety, like everybody that gets into electric vehicles, but we are ensuring that we have adequate charging at either, either end of the line, and so we have reliability. On the 522, on the 405 corridor, excuse me, we will be using double-decker coaches. This is similar to what we currently use for some of our services between Everett and Bellevue, for example. And those have proven to be very popular among passengers and actually are better, better suited to those highway speeds than a articulated coach. So that, that is the plan, and you can see the, the marketing or the branding that we are currently moving forward with is that color scheme. So program readiness, where are we on this? We, like I mentioned, we have been working on this for some time now. I think we're, we're about four years into it, and as was earlier mentioned, we did go through a bit of a pause with a realignment, COVID-related realignment, when the Sound Transit Board was sorting out the finances and how to, how to successfully deliver ST3 program. That being said, we have advanced through the project development process to take it from a general concept to completion of our environmental reviews. Have also completed 30% design and are actually hitting the 60% design milestone now. So we have, we have the go-ahead from our board of directors on a number of construction projects that we, we have entered into agreements with the state, and there's also a number of agreements with different jurisdictions. Specific to Bothell, we have, again, been working very closely with your staff to sort out the best route through downtown Bothell and how to connect up with the 405 line near UW Bothell and ensure that, that we serve the community the best we can, try and have the lightest touch possible. But again, think about, these are really 100-year projects, so we need to get this right with the initial build. So we have put a great deal of effort into coordination with your city, with the other 11 or 12 cities that are involved, and also King County Metro and Community Transit to make sure that our, our facilities are built so that they, they serve all of the transit interests in the area, and we really, again, look at this as a network. So we are, we are moving forward very quickly now with, with our program, and as I mentioned, we're pretty far into final design. That, that is going to help us to establish our final budget and our final schedule with our board of directors early next year. I'll explain that in a little more detail in a moment. So I do want to take a moment to really stress the partnerships and the importance of partnerships on this program. We have 45 miles of service, as I previously mentioned. We have over a dozen cities, so this is very complex with the permitting processes and to really make sure we have the right fit into communities. So we have, we have spent a lot of time developing those partnerships and strengthening them over time. The yield from some of these has really improved the, the project. I like to use this one, this is a, this is a really good slide to articulate what I mean by that, where originally, the plan for the S2 line that connects Bellevue to Linwood was, north of Totem Lake would be to operate on the outside of 405. And that would subject us to the unpredictable traffic patterns, general purpose traffic and so forth. And we would have upgraded the existing stops that are out there on the on-and-off ramps. By working with WashDOT and the legislature coming through in the most recent legislative session, the, we're able to take advantage of the express toll lanes for the entire length from Bellevue up to Canyon Park. And that, that has allowed us to, you know, shuffle some of the work in the project, basically streamline a lot of the different components of the entire corridor and change some of that, or change the project so that we can move to the inside and fund those inline BRT stations. That allows us to realize major time savings. As you can see on the screen, we're almost cutting the travel time between Linwood and Bellevue in half by partnering with the state and reorienting the BRT program for 405 North. And this is all, this is all coming from that partnership, and thankfully, the state legislature was able to get those ETLs funded. So we're moving forward with that at this time. Barrett walked you through this, this visual of the Brickyard Station, the inline station. This is, that, that component is Sound Transit funded. We are excited to be moving through the procurement for that Brickyard to 527 project with the state, so we're working closely together on that. The, the inline station itself, there's a representation on the right-hand side of the screen. It's very similar to what you saw for the 522 corridor, and that is intentional. We want the branding and the consistency to be there. So that, that is just a inline station representation there. I mentioned that we have, we have some of the program is complete, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Thompson for his remarks in July when we opened up the business and transit lane between Bothell and Kenmore. That was a very early project for ST3, so in that case, this is another example of a partnership where the city of Bothell had done the homework on it, got the environmental completed and the design work complete, so we were able to fund that construction project that was opened earlier this year, and we had the celebration in July. I also want to point out that this is, this program, parts of it are being completed incrementally, and there is a benefit to the existing transit services that are out there on 522. So while we expect to have the BRT service begin in '26 or '27, a lot of these investments will come online before then, and the existing services out there will benefit. So look ahead on next steps. I mentioned we are deep into final design at this point. We have been entering into a number of substantial agreements with the state and some of your neighboring, neighboring jurisdictions, and we will be coming back later this year with some other agreements. In fact, we have one this evening with you on the agenda later. with some other agreements. In fact, we have one this evening with you on the agenda later. With the completion of sixty percent design, that informs our design enough to be able to, uh, inform our property needs. So we are moving forward with our board this month with property to request, uh, the authorization to acquire property that is primarily in Kenmore out to Shoreline. But later this year, we'll be returning for our final package of properties. Um, I think of the five twenty-two corridor, and I may need a correction here, but we have roughly two hundred properties that are affected in one way or another. Most of those are partial acquisitions. And, uh, so we will be moving forward with those. We will have a lot of outreach throughout the rest of this year and into next year, particularly with property owners and residents on those properties, but also for the overall corridor to share where we are with design and how things are starting to shape up. And I will stop there. Be happy to take any questions, but just wanted to share with you that the BRT program is, is moving along very aggressively at this point. And we're looking forward to starting service in a few years.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. This is very exciting to me. I'm a commuter to the U District from Bothell. So I am really looking forward to an improved service. I currently use the, you know, the five twenty-two to Roosevelt Station and then take the light rail. Sometimes they take the three seventy-two. The, the challenge I have, and I'm, that's why I'm really looking forward to this. I wanted to go to Totum Lake a couple of weekends ago, and I wanted to ride the bus. But it would have taken me an hour for a ten minute car ride. So I was like, you know, I just drove instead. So I hope that, that service will improve here very soon. Um, I have a, a couple of questions. Maybe the Washdott one, you said there's percentage completed or funded. What does that really mean?
Sure.
Because they're like combined together.
Yeah. And that's what I alluded to in my final remark as well, is that we oftentimes talk about future plans, things that are in design or in the master plan long term. What the percentage completed or funded means, it's either physically completed or it's funded for a completion in the near term. That's what that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. I was looking at ninety-one percent completed on the, the right chart, but then you have much smaller numbers on the left hand side. So the averages didn't come out, but.
Sure.
It's okay. My math, I. You mentioned something about the Department of Defense. Like, what's the role of that?
Yeah. So four oh five is designated as a, I think it's called Stray Net. Essentially, it's a, an alternative for the Department of Defense to I five in the event of emergency.
Hmm.
And it essentially creates some protections for I four oh five. It's an important portion of the Department of Defense.
Okay. No need to get into more details.
Interesting.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
Um, and I, in the, in your, in your presentation, you had a picture of, you know, the King County Metro bus, three seventy-two, which happened to be the bus I take. When we have the BRT line completed here in a few years, would those services be affected at all? And similarly for community transit up north?
Our expectation for King County Metro is they will continue their existing services. So, uh, the, the five twenty-two, the Sound Transit five twenty-two route itself will transition into stride bus rapid transit and will, will run every ten minutes. Uh, and we'll be on those coaches that I showed you a, uh, an example of. Our understanding from King County Metro is they will continue at the same service levels. They, they do make adjustments as they go, but there's, there's no plan that we understand at this point that they would pull back service.
Final question. How come the F three route doesn't have double, double deckers? That's so cool, you know?
Well, next time you go to Totum Lake, uh, well, when it's up and running, you'll be able to use both. So, um, the, the thinking behind the, the five twenty-two line, the S three, uh, will have the articulated coaches. And so the benefit of that is it'll be three doors. It'll be very easy on and off. And our stop spacing is a lot closer. So we anticipate uh, more frequent stops, shorter trips, and it's better suited for that. With the double decker, you've got folks having to go up and down the stairs, but the, um, the, uh, the stops are greater distance. And, you know, the really, the, the big draw is downtown Bellevue is where most of our activity will be. So we expect a lot of commuters.
That makes sense. Thank you so much again.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you very much for this presentation. And, um, so my family has the reverse commute from the deputy mayor, although we have done that commute, um, for a number of years too, down to University of Washington from, from here in Bothell. And I'm really glad to see that, um, that connections to Bellevue and to light rail in Bellevue is going to improve east side connections, um, through this planning. Um, so, and also into Linwood as well. So this is looking really good. And I really appreciate this update. I started out on the planning commission where we, we heard that this presentation was coming. And it's really exciting to, to see it here. And I just really want to thank you. And twenty twenty-three for completion on part of it is, is really nice because that's coming up. Twenty twenty-six, oh, you know, we can be patient and wait for that. But, uh, thank you for all your good work and for this presentation tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmembers.
Okay. So I hesitate to do this. Um, thank you for the presentation. And as a daughter of an engineer and married to an engineer, I can appreciate all the engineering that you've put in there and knowing that that is not, that's not in my skill set. I can just appreciate it. I just have to say this. Um, and I want our folks at Washdott not to take this personally. This is to Washdott as a whole. Um, and, uh, when I saw the, the data that park and ride expansions are a hundred and thirty-six percent completed or funded, horse pucky went through my mind. Because here in Bothell, we have, as you know, have long waited for, um, park and rides to meet the needs of both people of Bothell and people who drive into Bothell. And I didn't see any indication that there was going to be any expansion of, of meeting that, that need. And I am not convinced that encouraging people to park, you know, carpool to a park and ride is going to solve that problem. So want to put an ear to ear grin on this face because I know a lot of work has gone on here and with our staff, communicating with our staff. Tell me that we're going to have a park and ride that really meets the need of the region and, and I will be your number one fan. So, thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to let that one go either. Um, I think we've all, we've all been expecting it for quite some time. ST one, ST two, ST three, we've heard about them. Um, but times are changing, right? People may not be driving as much anymore, um, but there's still opportunities for transient oriented developments. What can we do? Brickyard, one twenty-eighth, ensuring that we have transient oriented development, you know, housing at those locations. So, um, I think that there needs to be some more conversations and some more work done around that, um, to ensure that the people in the north end that are paying for light rail, which are not getting light rail, have those type of opportunities as well. So, um, hands off, I mean, four oh five is, I've been here fifty-six years. So seeing that the changes that have happened along four oh five are amazing. Um, seeing that we've moved things inside versus outside, applaud you for that. That was an amazing opportunity to keep things flowing, which leads me to believe that that is going to be more reliable along four oh five, um, which then I, I pose as asked a question, hearing five twenty-two, ten minute headways, ten minute times, are we going to be okay? Is one forty-fifth going to become that bottleneck? Are we gonna, is there going to be improvements along one forty-fifth to help there, to get us to light rail, right? Are people's commutes going to change over the next five to ten years, working from home, coming from the north end to the south end to not want to use five twenty-two? So all these things, all these conversations that we've had regionally and talking through transit and how it's changing, um, all come flooding through my head as you guys are presenting your presentation. But I, I think at the end of the day, I think you guys are doing amazing work. I think that we need to be able to move people, right? We need to find ways to move people. Obviously, there's going to be people in your community that have to have cars, you know? You have to take your kids to practice, right? So you have to have a car in a community. But is there a way, as the deputy mayor said, that I can get on a bus and get to work, and I can get there in a reliable timeframe? Because I would take a bus. But if it's not reliable for me to get from Bothell to Mercer Island, I'm not going to take a bus. I'm going to take the car because I have to be there at a specific time. Um, I'd like to, to, to ask a couple of questions around the, um, the, I think there was some funding or something acquisitions in Shoreline and Kenmore to Shoreline or something? I was, I wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. Um, well, I'll, I'll try and address some of your other remarks as well, that, uh, our goal with Bus Rapid Transit is to not only have very high frequency, the amenities that I described, the nice looking buses and so forth, but at its core, we're really trying to build a corridor that has, uh, speed and reliability. So getting at what you're talking about, which is can you count on the bus? Will it get you there reliably in the same amount of time? Is it going to come frequently enough? So that really is the focus of, um, building these inline stations on four oh five, take advantage of the express toll lanes and the reliability due to the variable tolling to keep people out of there and keep the speeds up. On the five twenty-two corridor, uh, there's a, there's a partial network of those bat lanes. So business and transit access lanes, uh, on the outside of the corridor. And the major, uh, capital investment, the major funding that we're spending or investment that we're making is to complete that network. So they're, they're more or less continuous from one forty-fifth up to downtown Bothell so that we can bypass traffic. Uh, on one forty-fifth itself, we are not widening the entire corridor. We're doing spot improvements where we see the worst congestion, uh, will be widening out intersections so that we can get a bus right up to the light and, uh, get through it before all the other traffic. Um, so it's, it's more isolated improvements on one forty-fifth. But all of those require, uh, land acquisition. And while there is some existing, uh, public right of way, uh, we, we have an effect on a number of private properties along the corridor. And, uh, when I, when I was getting at the acquisitions that we will be doing out there, most of those are partial or sliver takes. It, it may only be a foot or two off of a yard, or it may be an entire parcel. And that is something that we're working through right now. But that is, um, that's on our calendar with our board of directors for actually later this week, and then again, later this month to, uh, to get the approval authority from them to begin those acquisitions. And, uh, it is, I'm not going to get into all the detail here, but it is, uh, very deliberate and very open so that we, we understand that this is not desirable from the, the residents' perspective or the businesses' perspective. Uh, and it can be very scary. So we have a very clear, uh, path that we need to follow, uh, that is, again, it's very open. And we, we try and make it as, as little stress as possible with the property owner that we're dealing with. We'd be happy to come back and explain it to you in great detail if, if you have the curiosity and time for it. But, uh, that, that's what I'm getting at is why we need to go out is, um, for those, for the roadway widening and then also to place the stations themselves.
Okay. So it's more acquisition of property along the corridor versus, you know, park and rides and things like that. Because I think there were supposed to be three park and rides along the five twenty-two corridor that were supposed to be done. And those, those, am I correct? Are those not being done now?
Those three park and rides, uh, one in downtown Bothell, one in Kenmore, and one in Lake Forest Park were, uh, described roughly as three hundred stalls each. Uh, as part of the, the board's realignment process last year, this was in response to the pandemic and the financial impacts. Uh, their, their direction or their choice was to defer those park and rides about ten years. Uh, in the case of Lake Forest Park, they're deferred to twenty forty-four. But, uh, the intent is to complete the Kenmore and Bothell parking, parking rides in the twenty thirty-four timeframe. So, uh, that was again, a response to the financial stresses. Um, so they have not gone away, but they have been deferred about ten years. So at this time, we're not acquiring the, the right of way for those.
Okay. Or the land for them.
Correct.
Is that correct? Um, and could that be brought back up again?
Uh, yes.
To make that, to make that, those property acquisitions sooner than later?
Well, um, I think the short answer is yes. Uh, my, my explanation here is that, uh, while the board deferred those projects for financial purposes, uh, they, they did also invite, uh, proposal, proposals is a formal, uh, sounds too formal. They're looking for innovative ways to address the demand, uh, partnerships, other ways of providing a park and ride supply. Um, so I think they're all ears. And, uh, we, we have been seeing some interest from the city of Renton, for example. Um, so we are, we are trying to keep that alive and move forward. But the, so I would say that it's, it's a yes, but so we have, uh, we have deferred those formally, but I think our board is looking for, um, other ideas to be brought forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only merely asking because to me, times are changing, right? Our patterns are changing. How we travel is changing from north end to south. I mean, I, I think I've heard numbers of two hundred, excess of two hundred thousand people travel from the north to the south across the county line. And so for me, I'm trying to my, my mind think, if you got five twenty-two corridor, who's riding, who's going to take those bat lanes, those BRT lanes? Who's, who's going to be in those lanes on those buses, right? And where are they coming from? Right? Because it's like, I live on one eat away, but I'm not going to walk to the bus to take the bus. So I need someplace to be able to go to get to the bus. So then I'm going to take an alternative mode, first mile of transportation. I'm going to ride a bike or something like that to get to the bus stop, right? So then where are those bus stops going to be? So then I think, how many people are we really servicing along that corridor if we don't have those places for them to come into? So those are questions that just go through my mind. Like, if we just all of a sudden don't build them, is the, is it really still going to be that effective? Are that many people really going to truly still use those buses along that corridor? Or are they going to change their pattern? And maybe those who would have come down from the north to the south to park in a Bothell, are they going to then just stay on the four oh five that's now more reliable and more frequent, right? Same frequency, correct? So those, those are just things that are going through my mind, not that we have to do anything. I'm just wanted to ask the question because, you know, I, I think it's important for us to just know some of the answers, know how Sound Transit's thinking, uh, especially for our constituency that's been looking forward to these things for, for quite some time. So, thank you.
All right. I just have a couple of real quick questions. Um, on the Brickyard and Canyon Park, both in the inline lanes, um, is there going to be a ramp to get bikes, scooters, anybody, anything that rolls up those? Or are those just stairs and are they going to have to carry them?
You refer the connecting to the pedestrian bridge?
Yeah.
There'd be elevators that could be used as well.
Awesome. Fantastic. Um, and, uh, you said bike storage was only at select stations. Is that stations that have room for parking? Or I guess why only select stations?
Uh, it is, uh, largely related to how much space there is. Uh, on, on five twenty-two, for example, uh, we have some really tight spots that would require a lot more land acquisition. And we wouldn't expect very high ridership at those locations. Um, at others such as the, the hub out of five twenty-two and four oh five, we're expecting a lot of transfers. There's more land available. And similarly at Brickyard, it's right next to a park and ride. So we have room for some of those, uh, bike storage facilities.
Okay.
So it's really, uh, driven by geography and expected ridership at any given station.
But we are looking to put them at the four oh five, five twenty-two interchange, right?
Correct. Yes.
Because that's on the bike trail. Um, fantastic. Well, thank you guys for coming. Really appreciate it. Um, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right. We are going to take a ten minute break, starting right now before we resume, um, our meeting. It's seven fifty-one. Um, we will see you all at eight oh one. All right, welcome back, everybody. Next up, we have the city manager report. So city manager standard or Kyle, I think we're just going first names.
You're good with, you're good with first name?
Cool.
I, I know both of those and thank you, mayor. And I do have three brief updates for you tonight. Only after long recesses will I theme them, but I think tonight's theme is vacancies. So we're going to, we're going to touch on that. So the first vacancy I want to address is we had the great auditor of honoring Jeff Smith and for his contributions to the community. He didn't mention it, but his wife, Susan, who was mentioned in the proclamation, was here tonight too. So it was great to have them with us. But the natural question would be is, well, with his retirement, what's next? And so I am pleased to share, I shared earlier today with the community development department and from, with the ELT and with the council as well. But I'm excited to be welcoming Jason Greenspan to be our next community development director. It'll, it'll be a little bit, but we'll get to that in a second. So for those who are watching at home or didn't have an opportunity to meet Jason, he is currently serving as the manager of sustainable and resilient development for the Southern California Association of Governments, which I translate to the Southern California equivalent of, of Puget Sound Regional Council, so PSRC. And he's been there since 2015. Prior to that, he worked for Middleton Township in New Jersey for 11 years. If you haven't been there or looked it up, they're, they're similar size as Bothell, about, with a bigger geographic footprint. So actually 65,000 is their current population and about 58 square miles. And when you look them up too, he left there in 2014. That was the last year that they won one of the most livable city awards. So clearly Jason had something to do with that, I'm sure. He would never take credit. But when he was there, he worked both as a senior planner and then as six years as the director of planning and community development there. So excited to have his experience, also some educational background. He has a bachelor's of arts in urban studies from Rutgers University and a master's of science in urban studies from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. That means the city is on a streak, coincidentally enough, of hiring the last two executives with master's degrees from the University of Nebraska Omaha. Go Mavericks. So Jason will be, he has some time to, to wrap up and transition in his current role and then we'll be moving, moving north to, to join us here in Bothell. And so what I also want to just share with council too is that how grateful I am that we, just two short weeks or two and a half weeks before I started, the city welcomed Ashley Winchell as our deputy community development director. And that's a, a different role than the way we filled that position in the past, but it was also looking at times of transition. And Ashley, for being here just a few minutes before that I, I've been here, it's just so evident of her leadership and what she brings to this organization, the community of how well respected she is already in this short time. She'll be serving as our, as our interim director and I, I have no concerns about how this transition is going to go between, we had, we had Mike's departure in the spring. Jeff, as you noted, stepped up and provided some transitional leadership. I have full confidence in Ashley to lead the department until Jason gets here. And I'm really excited to see the two of them work together to bring new ideas to Bothell. I think we're going to be better for it. So thank you to Ashley who's here with us tonight as Jeff didn't really stay much past the proclamation I noted. Second vacancy is a vacancy no longer as well. Just wanted to note too, for anybody who is driving by or out in the community, that we're excited that our fire station, or fire crews were able to move into Station 45 on Friday. We're really thankful to the community for the investment that has been made into public safety and allowing for this complete rebuild of a fire station. We have another one coming. I just want to note that we will, we will celebrate soon. There's still a few things to tie off in order to make the building available to the general public beyond just the fire crews. And the timing should work really well with our fall mid-October open house that has traditionally held. And so we're looking forward to a ribbon cutting and an open house and to really celebrate with the community the important milestone of having Fire Station 45 open. But again, want to acknowledge some great work from both our fire crews on design and public works for managing that project and getting it open successfully. So thank you to the teams. And then lastly, we have a vacancy on the lodging tax advisory committee that I just wanted to raise for council and see if there's any feedback on our next steps before we come forward next week, what it would be, what I intend to do. This spring, we had one member, Laura Racer, who had to vacate her position. If you aren't familiar with Lodging Tax Advisory Committee or LTAC, there's very specific requirements of who is able to serve on that committee. The one that's the easiest is one, we have one council member. And so currently that's council member Zornz, who serves as the chair of the committee. And then in, in shorthand, this is not exactly what it says in the code, but there's three, three representatives who have to work in a, for an industry that pays into the fund, so hoteliers. And then there's three that coordinate or are on the receiving end of funds and altogether that group meets. And so the vacancy that was created is one of a former general manager of the county inn and suites by Radisson over on North Creek Parkway. The new member or the new general manager upon hiring and getting on boarded, found out about this, this responsibility and expressed interest in serving in that vacant role. So I won't name them just because again, right now they're of interest. But what I would like to run by council was the staff recommendation would be that we would have, we would invite this individual to come to a future council meeting to introduce themselves to council and then have legislation ready should you choose to appoint them. The alternative is that we could certainly do a, go out and do a full recruitment to fill the vacancy. But again, the reality is, is it's a very limited scope of who's qualified for that position. And so knowing that we have somebody who appears qualified from what we know, they've been a general manager of hotels outside of Bothell for seven years, new to the community, eager to get involved, it seemed like a good opportunity to, to pursue and see if this individual would be qualified. So if, if there's no objection, the intent would be to invite them to come to a meeting coming forward. And then again, we could follow that up with council taking action, but I'm open to feedback if there's another path that council would like us to take. And Laura is also here tonight to help navigate through that as our city clerk. So with that, that brings our vacancy report to a close.
Are you looking for feedback on that?
Yeah, I think primarily if there's, there's any concerns, questions or again, if we, I'll presume silence is consensus of support for bringing, bringing the individual in, but also really happy to take any feedback because there's no, there's no one way. I think mainly we're just trying to be expeditious of taking advantage of the fact that there is somebody who's qualified and is somebody who's qualified and interested. And again, also, I'm always a big fan of recruitments, if that's what we need to do. So we can, we can take the time to do that as well. I don't believe, Laura can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe they have a meeting in September. I think it was canceled, or maybe that was the one that, okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
So, so we'd be looking at, I think, the third week of October is the next meeting before the individual would be an active participant.
All right. Silence sounds like, silence is consent. Councilor Zorn?
I was just waiting to see if you, you had any thoughts. I'm totally fine with it. You know, like our city manager said, hotelier managers are hard to come by, and we need that spot filled by a hotelier. And this one seems capable. So I don't see anything glaring that we should do anything beyond just meet them and go from there.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to not do the staff recommendation. I think it's the right call. All right. Next up, we've got council committee reports. Any council members have any committees to report? It's August, or it was just August. All right, next up, projected agenda discussion. None have been submitted. Does anybody have an item you'd like to discuss for a future agenda? Moving along, we just saved some time. Consent agenda, we had one item get pulled, and that was the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
I move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I, I think, did he get that first? I don't know. I have a motion from council member Zorn and a second from deputy mayor Alcabra. Would anybody like to discuss the motion? No. Can we just do hands? Anybody? If you, okay, cool. We have unanimous hands. Consent agenda passes. All right, first up, we have Agenda Bill 2211.
Sorry, Mayor, we had the minutes.
Oh, yes, totally. Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. Councilmember Manke, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure how best to recommend changes to the minutes. Do we need to make an official motion, or do I need to just need to run through the changes I'd like to recommend?
I'll defer to the city clerk.
If there's scriveners errors, we can fix them without them having to be, you know, a motion made, but if, if they're significant, yeah, we can run through them.
Okay, what, what qualifies as a scriveners error versus something that's not?
Like a spelling error, or, you know.
If you, if you say can instead of can't, those types of things. If it's more substantive, perhaps if you have an example, you could share it, and we could then make a determination.
Okay, great. I'll just, I'll run through them real quick. There's, there's only a couple of them. The first one was from the April 12 minutes. Under the visitors' comments section, Greg Smith was listed twice, and Deepa Savrajon from Clean Energy Solutions spoke about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and she was admitted.
Okay. Thank you.
And then on the May 3 minutes, under Proclamations and Presentations, currently states that CEO Ilgan Fritz was present at the meeting and presented that night, but he was actually absent. I'm not sure why he's absent, but he was absent from the meeting that night.
Okay.
And then under council committee reports, Sound Cities Association was referred to as Suburban Cities Association, so just a quick, quick change on that one.
Old habits on that one.
And then the last one, under ordinances and resolutions, stated that there was a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, and it should have actually just said, motion approved the recommended action.
Okay, we will get those fixed. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make it if it's okay.
Please do.
I move to pass the meeting minutes with the recommended changes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second from, okay, from council member McNeil. Would anybody like to discuss the motion? All right, hands up if you want it to pass. All right, we've got unanimous. Now, we're gonna move on to our first posted agenda bill. Agenda Bill 22115, approval of contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for lobbying services at the state level from October 2022 through September 2024. And city manager standard is gonna present.
Thank you. And no formal presentation tonight, but I did want to just lay out some of the considerations here before you and then open it up for a vote. Wanted to bring this forward for presentation versus consent, just in that we hadn't talked specifically about one of the significant changes, which is really just that the recommendation here is to move from, instead of having consecutive one-year terms, to move this into a two-year term. I think that, as you probably have noticed, there's some thematic things that stay with us more than one legislative cycle. And so having that continuity of kind of thinking in terms of a two-year chunk, I think is helpful in the partnership with, with our, whoever is serving as our lobbyist. And then also, as staff noted in the agenda bill, there's also some symmetry there of getting us onto a timing around our budget development. So knowing, again, we presume that this, that we'd be funding something, the city's been funding for lobbying services at the state level since 2018, so our budget will assume that we would continue that, but it'll just be good to tie that together. We know that this is a significant activity of importance for the council over the year and years. And, you know, again, we, we see the value of having a state lobbyist, literally a value every legislative session in terms of the opportunities of tying specifically down on Olympia, what are the needs of the Bothell community, and having somebody who's there and able to answer questions and really highlight things, as well as when to call, when to call Bothell and say, hey, we need somebody to come down to Olympia to testify. So I think that relationship is really a helpful one. But beyond just the advocacy for, for funding, is also just being able to, again, tell the story of what's important for Bothell as laws are being considered. So we're appreciative of that. Timing of this, wanted to bring it forward as we, we are going to be, our current contract is set to expire at the end of this month. So if approved, this contract would go into effect of October 1st, and we know that we have another busy legislative year ahead of us. Want to be clear, too, that I know in recent, recent history, the council also entered in an agreement with this same, same group to federal lobbying. That agreement is not touched by this. The agreement actually runs through the end of this year, so we will be back at a later time in December for consideration of that agreement before it expires. But for tonight, this is looking specifically at the state contract. And with that, if there's any questions between myself and the village of all of us over here on this side of the room, I'm sure we'll have an answer, but otherwise, we'd leave it up to council to discuss and vote.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the timings. Since we're doing contracts for state and federal, why don't we combine the two and just make it a easier renewal every couple of years?
Yeah, that is an option we could look to do going forward. I think there are for different services, and part of the reason of where we were, the timing isn't aligned right now, and I think we were, the thought is to, let's give it another cycle on the federal level, just to ensure that, yep, we're getting the value that we think we are. I think this summer, we got a good reminder of the value of having a federal lobbyist. So big, big millions coming in is always a good thing, but for now, there really are, there are two different scopes of work. We can certainly look to combining them for the next go around, though.
I understand. I thought it was the same firm we're going with, so it's like one contract.
Yeah, it is the same firm, but the, but the work being asked to do because of the fact that it's the federal focus versus the state focus. I can certainly see, I mean, again, it would not take an engineering feat of, like, adding lanes through the braids of the 522 overpass to figure out how we could make that happen, though. So I think it's a good suggestion.
It might be. Paul might say it might actually be as an engineering feat, but, anyway, sorry. I, but it makes sense to me to move forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Zorn?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Oh, looks like councilmember Aldrich has her hand up to speak.
I would entertain a motion instead of speaking.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, we're gonna move to councilmember McNeil, who has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. So real, real quick, just wanted to find out, the two-year, would that be the 126 times two, or? 126,000, sorry.
Yeah, let me just double check, I want to make sure that I get you the right number. What we can do real quick is that, yeah, the, the rate is going to be, as noted in there, the rate is about $5,000 a month. So doing the quick head math, that would be the two-year contract. And again, just to, in terms of the financial aspect of it, the, our consultant is willing to, they're, they're not charging us a full COLA for a cost of living adjustment for 2023. And then in 20, so there'd be 5% in year one, and year two, there'd be a 3% cost of living increase, which is a good value. But yeah, so it works out to be, at the, at the peak of this agreement would be 5,165 a month.
Okay, okay. And then, I don't know if you have this off the top of your head, but in this last cycle, our lobbyists from the state level, was there, what was our grant, what did our grants look like that they were part of?
Ooh, I do not know off the top of my head. We could certainly follow up on that. That's a great question.
Yeah, I just think it's important when we have a discussion about, you know, these types of funds, you know, over a two-year period, what, what, what that person, what that lobbyist is bringing in for the city, I think is important to have in that, in that same conversation.
Well, that's a great, that's a great fiscal note for, for the future.
In advance of a motion, I'm just gonna say that I think the ROI on the spend is incredible for the city, and I like working with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. So this is a no-brainer for me.
Councilmember Zorn?
All right. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute in substantially the same form as presented, the professional service agreements with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for 2022 through 2024, state government relations services in the amounts of $126,148.
Second.
Perfect. I have a motion from councilmember Zorn and a second from councilmember McNeil. City clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Perfect. Moving on, we have Agenda Bill 22116, project administration agreement between Sound Transit and the City of Bothell for the Stride BRT program. And city manager standard.
Yeah, so tonight is a very Sound Transit oriented meeting. So joining us tonight online, I believe, or no, actually here in person, excuse me, we are joined by our senior engineer, Ken G, from Public Works to talk about this agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Ken, and here to request your approval to execute the project administration agreement, or PAA, between Bothell and Sound Transit. This agreement continues our partnership with Sound Transit and provides a means to reimburse the city for work done in support of the ST bus rapid transit work within City of Bothell limits that are necessary but not recoverable via the standard permit process. As you know, Sound Transit is currently designing and will then build the necessary improvements, and this requires significant city staff time to coordinate above and beyond the typical permit review process. Under the PAA, the two parties will prepare and execute task orders that will pay for the city staff time necessary to help Sound Transit advance design permitting and construction of their projects within the city. As an example, the first task we anticipate will reimburse the city for an assigned city staff coordinator to help Sound Transit's Northeast 145th Street SR 522 Bus Rapid Transit Project, for it to progress from 30% through completion of the design phase. The intent for this coordinator, currently that's me, is to streamline the design and review process for Sound Transit while still ensuring that the project complies with city needs. This PAA furthers the cooperation for the purposes of ST3 system expansion between city and Sound Transit initiated by the partnering agreement executed back in May of 2018. In closing, staff recommends that the council authorize city manager to enter into a PAA with Sound Transit in substantially the same form as presented. And with that, I'll open to your questions.
I'm seeing no questions, so I'm happy to entertain, or Deputy Mayor?
I was gonna make the motion.
Go for it.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a project administration agreement with the Centripeded Sound Regional Transit Authority, AKA Sound Transit, in substantially the same form as presented.
Councilmember Aldrich?
I will second the motion.
All right, I have a motion from deputy mayor Alcabra and a second from councilmember Aldrich. City clerk? Or would anybody like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to speak to the motion. I will be supporting the motion. I think it's important that we, we have these type of partnerships with Sound Transit, and that when we move forward with these types of partnerships, that it's a two-way partnership. So thank you for bringing this forward and explaining exactly how that works, and I like how you're personally going for yourself. So thank you. I appreciate that.
You explained it so well, we had no questions. All right.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
All right. Next up, we have Agenda Bill 22117, consideration of a transportation planner. I'm gonna turn it over to city manager standard.
Thank you, Mayor. And councilmembers, you may recall that at our last meeting in July, council had before you in Agenda Bill, let's see, it was 22109, consideration of funding the Canyon Park Transportation Demand Management Program. At that time, we were joined by Steve Morikawa, who is back with us tonight, our capital division manager. And he noted that I'd be coming back tonight to talk to you about a consideration of the transportation supervisor. He'll be able to share what the, what the nexus between these, these two asks are. I just wanted to also share that one of the, we, we wanted to bring these as separate items to let you basically consider the first thing first, and also just to have a little more time as we get closer to the anticipation of the next biennial budget, to make sure that this, this all tracks. But Steve's here tonight to, to tell that story and what this position would be used for, so I'll turn it over to Steve.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and councilmembers. Tonight, I'll be asking you to consider addition of a transportation supervisor position. First, what I'd like to do is kind of go over the current organizational structure to give you some context. So the capital division falls under their deputy public works director, who in our organization is a city engineer, and that person's under public works director. Also, within the same structure in the engineering section is our utility and development services division, and they oversee the water, sewer, stormwater enterprise utilities. They also review and permit civil, the civil engineering aspect of private development and non-city projects. I haven't shown the positions in that organization there. Also, under the city engineer is a transportation operations engineer, and that position oversees all traffic operations, including such items as traffic signals, striping, crosswalks, neighborhood traffic calming, and safety issues. So the focus tonight is on the capital division, and specifically the long-range the long-range planning side of it. So, this division on one side, where you see a lot of the engineers and inspectors, they design, they acquire right away, and they construct city transportation and utility projects. The other side is where you see the transportation planner, and that's the side that actually needs a lot of help, and that's the long-range planning side. So, our ongoing work and our recent work, I wanted to kind of give you a little description what the long-range planning side does. So, we do all the comp plan side with the transportation element of the comp plan, and this includes things like, recently, we worked on the Canyon Park Subarea Update. We're helping to implement, and we helped put together the downtown subarea plan, again, the transportation side of it. We're working on the citywide bike plan right now. An important part of the long-range planning is regional representation. This makes sure that the city is aware of anything that could positively or negatively impact it. It affords us opportunities to advocate for the city, and it ties really well into the funding opportunities from the regional aspect. It takes a lot of effort, there's a lot of meetings. The Regional Project Evaluation Committee meeting is ARPEC, there's Eastside Transportation Partnership, Snowmish County calls their meeting the ICC. So, a lot of these meetings are transportation-oriented. The King County meets together as agencies, and it's part of the funding process as well, where we rank projects and score projects for grant funding. So, some other things we do, we work with transit agencies a lot, Sound Transit, it's an ongoing thing, but particularly in the last few years, we've been working on the BRT program. Community Transit and King County Metro, we also continue to have ongoing coordination efforts. As SWIFT potentially comes down into downtown, the long-range planning has to kind of key into that and coordinate how that's gonna happen and how they're gonna serve UW-Bothell and Cascadia College as well as the downtown. As this link gets together from Sound Transit, all these bus organizations reroute their routes, and they get the agencies together to try to figure out how best to do that to kind of serve and connect up to the link stations. So, that takes time and effort as well. WashDOT coordination, we have state routes through our downtown, as well as going up past Canyon Park, but we also have I-4 or I-5 corridor, which I think you've heard has been around for like 25, 30 years, their master plan. So, it's an ongoing planning effort. Most recently, coming out of that is the express toll lanes up north, which, right now, we've been able to hand off to our development review session, and they're the ones who are gonna actually implement and work with them during the construction phase. One of the heavy liftings for us now is grant funding. We have to kind of come up with a strategy, how we go about this. It's not just throwing applications in, which is a lot of work, by the way, but we have to figure out what projects compete well, what our cash flow is gonna be, what projects intertie with each other, and can kind of put them together and score better. So, it takes a lot of effort. The actual applications and presentations, right now, we get a lot of substantial help from the engineers who, you know, there's a, there's about eight to 10 of them that essentially help us with the actual individual applications. So, the other three things we do is Complete Streets program. This picture here is kind of cool. It comes straight off the WashDOT website for Complete Streets, and the picture on the right there looks pretty familiar. So, that's a cool thing. We do CTR, Commute Trip Reduction, and we respond to public requests and concerns. So, that's the ongoing stuff, a lot of which will continue. And we have actually a lot of opportunities coming up. So, three of the big ones are, we are gonna do a comp plan update, and it has to be done by 2024, and we really want to rework the transportation element of it. So, we want to go multimodal, lost where it was. We want to address climate change, environment, resiliency, safety, and we want to look at it through a diversity, equity, inclusion lens. So, it takes a lot of effort to get through that. We have more funding opportunities today than we had two years ago, but it takes more time to take advantage of those funding opportunities. So, one thing we could do by bringing in help and resources is create more opportunities and ability to apply for more grants. And finally, if we get the TDM grant for Canyon Park, we will need somebody to oversight that as well. So, if we want to continue to do what we've been doing, and if we want to do and take advantage of opportunities, we're gonna need help. So, the position we're looking at is a supervising transportation engineer. They would be on the long-range transportation side of Capital Division, under the Capital Division Manager. The proposal is, in 2024, their key workload would be the comp plan update, the transportation element. They would assist us in regional coordination, and that means grant support as well. Currently, how we're doing regional support is we're kind of doing a teamwork thing. The city engineer, Eddie Low, Public Works Director, Aaron, myself, and even some staff members, we kind of go through the, the meetings, and we try to attend as many as we can. But there's still too many for us to do that and continue to do the in-house work. So, adding another team member would help us with that. And then, they would oversight the TDM program, and then be the supervisor for the transportation planner. So, we're looking for somebody with sufficient experience to handle very complex work. We want to hire at a level such that the person can be a strong advocate for the city at a regional level. That's why we want the supervisory level. So, after 2024 is done, and that big workload for the comp plan transportation element passes, one of the visions that we're looking at is potentially having that supervisor take over the transportation operations as well. So, we would slide at the transportation operations engineer under that, in that side of the Capital Division, and they would oversee the stuff like signal, striping, and safety. So, for funding the position for the first two years, well, yearly, we anticipate up to $200,000 a year, that salary, benefits, and everything, about $6,000 for startup equipment, which means computers essentially. From 2022 to 2024, we propose using 100%, the 3% administrative fee from the, that's put on top transportation impact fees that are collected from private developers. I believe there's about half a million dollar in that account right now. From 2025 and beyond, we would propose approximately half of the cost be paid for by that same fee, and then the other half be street fund. And street fund is not general fund. Currently, it's been paid for the safe streets and sidewalk levy, and I believe another significant portion is fuel gas tax, basically. So, that's my presentation, and the recommendations approve the addition of a transportation supervisor and authorize us to hire. And I'd be open for questions.
Councilmember Zornz?
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. It's a pretty good hefty salary that's going to get a lot of people's attention, but I also realize that there's, there's a lot being put on, put on this position. And my concern is, was, when I first went through this, is that, is this position going to be sustainable? Can we, you know, continue to pay for it without it costing somewhere else? So, I appreciate the thought that you put into where the monies would come from this, and I'm not gonna go any further down that rabbit hole about sustainability for a position like this, because, you know, then you start to wonder what all else is sustainable and not sustainable. Looks like you put a lot of good thought into this, and I want to thank you for that, because sustainability is, to hold, for that position is, is a, is a key concern. So, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Steve. Is this a normal position for most cities our size?
I think we're kind of transitioning. We were a small city, you guys talked about 13,000, and now we're 48. So, I think we're transitioning now, and we're in that kind of spot where we're starting to grow bigger, and we have to kind of think about the future and how we're gonna put things together, which is why you saw a little bit of a difference between the first two years and the, from then on. That's part of the planning and the future for sustaining this in the long term. So, I think, yes, it is. I think we are growing into that city where we need to do those things.
Fabulous. And then, obviously, it doesn't matter if it's King County or Snohomish County, it'd be citywide, supervising citywide transportation projects?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay. And then, you had talked about cost recovery through some impact fees and others. Earlier, there was a comment about some recovery with Sound Transit. Is any of this position, would any of this position or anything this position does be covered under that?
Not, probably not under the Sound Transit one. I think we're beyond the long-range planning phase of that. We're kind of more into the engineering implementation part. This is more a longer range planner. So, if we had been able to get compensated, it would have been earlier in the exercise. But typically, planning purposes, we don't get compensated.
Okay. And then, lastly, you had mentioned committees like ETP and other, others, right? So, would, would this supervisor be attending those meetings with a council member, or how is that, how do you envision that?
Currently, we try to attend those meetings. Right now, I believe Eddie Low goes to most of them, and Aaron will go to some of them as well. So, like I said before, we're trying to do it by committee right now, and I think we will continue to have to. Part of the interesting part of us is we're on the north end of the lake. They used to have one committee for that, and then they got, kind of got kicked out of that, and we're on the east side, but we're in Snow County and we're in King County, so we kind of have double the fun. But our presence is required at more meetings as well. So, I think we will continue to teamwork it and not have any one person. And I think in the longer term, we will come up with a strategy where we'll be more consistent with who will be at those meetings.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Having attended many of those, those meetings, transportation meetings, it's important that we're at the table. And thank you for everybody for all your service attending those meetings, because without you guys attending them, we're not gonna see our projects moving forward, or at least have the opportunity for those grant funds to come in for the project. So, anything that we can do to help you in that, to make sure that we're sitting at the table, to reinforce what we're trying to do here, we, just let us know. So, appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrichs, but first, Steve, could you stop sharing? Because I can't see Councilmember Manke if he's raising his hand.
Yes, thank you for that. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Steve, for the presentation and for bringing this request forward to us. My, my major question was, was regarding, you know, staff at, at regional meetings. I'm the council member who attends the Eastside Transportation Forum, and I know that I really, I benefit, the city benefits when a council member can attend those meetings with a staff person, and that more comes out of it. So, I'm, I was really glad to see that that is, is part of the reasoning for this project, but also to just see how responsive our planning department is being to, to requests for, you know, bike plan and TDM and upcoming transportation goals for the city. So, I, I really appreciate this proposal. I think the way you've sort of built it for sustainability over time is, is really prudent, and I just really appreciate that, that you brought this to us. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Steve. I think, as you heard, we all recognize the need. So, and we talked in the past about, oh, you told, in the past, we, this is a prerequisite for land use discussions that are gonna happen at some point in the very near future for the comprehensive plan. So, this is very important. The, the thing, and maybe we don't address it right now, but maybe in the future, or maybe in the budget me, conversations we're gonna have is, which, and I, my one-on-one with the city manager earlier, to put this in the context and to allude to by Councilmember Zornz, like, in the context of everything else that's happening, what are the, what is, what are the opportunity costs? I know you specified specific funds to fund this, this, this position, but what else isn't being funded by those, by that fund, you know, if we fund this one, for example? We don't have to talk about it right now, maybe during the conversation, the budget discussions that we're gonna have at some point. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz, you want to bite at the apple? Or Councilmember Manke? Or did you? Okay. I agree with a lot of the things that my colleagues up here have said, so instead of repeating them, I just want to say thanks. I appreciate you guys bringing this recommendation. This sits kind of at the heart of a lot of things that, that Bothell really cares about, and that I really care about, and I'm really excited for the opportunities here. So, thank you. I'll be supporting this.
In the, in the, in the, I'm sitting here thinking it's too, it's too late. In, in the interest of expediency, I move the recommended action.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Zornz and a second from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just for purposes of, can you read the recommended action, just so we're on this one? Just want to make sure we've got it written in the record.
I can read it. I have it right here. The recommended action is to approve the addition of a transportation supervisor position with the authorization to hire.
Perfect. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
I don't know why it always seems so abrupt when the votes end. I'm like, oh, yeah, I gotta go. I gotta talk again. All right, we have, next up is Council Conversations. Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to get this email pulled up when Councilmember, Councilmember McNeil asked this question about all the things that the lobbyists had done for our city. Just wanted to read these off real quick, so anybody who's still listening gets a good grasp of what, what we're paying for here. So, couple of things they helped us out with this year, $7 million towards the widening of Bothell Way, $500,000 for North Creek Region, Regional Trail Section 4, $250,000 for Transportation Demand Management in Canyon Park, and then a lot of work on the Interstate 405 improvements that we heard about tonight. So, in dollar figures, about 7.75 million, and then whatever you want to value the 405 improvements at, which is huge, I think. So, I think we're getting everything that we're paying for tenfold from our lobbyists. I think they're doing a lot of good work for us. They're advocating for us, they're working with our legislators to advocate for the things our city needs. And I mentioned this before, I was originally, when this was first signed, before I was on council, not for it. I didn't think it was a good investment, but over the last few years, seeing all that they have done for our city, and all the dollars that have come in, because we've had them there in Olympia, because they've been calling us to ask us to advocate when the time is right, all of these things together, they're just doing great work for us, and I'm gonna continue to be supportive of this going forward. So, just wanted to put that out there, what they've done for us, and I will go ahead and yield.
It's Council Conversations, just.
Oh, okay. Well, one, props to Councilmember Manke, because I think it is, let's see, can I do the math? It's like, let's see, nine plus three is midnight your time? So, thank you for hanging in there with us. Then, the other thing is, because I'm a little OCD, and I have a thing about drains, if anybody's been out walking with me, they know I have a compulsion. If I see a drain with a leaf on it, I'm scraping it off with my foot. I have adopted four drains, and I've been told by my son that I, you get to name them. That's what's fun. I've been told by my son I have to rename them after them, my children, and not the animals. So, that means I have to adopt a fifth drain. So, I'm challenging councilmembers, well, I want to say top five drains, but if you just adopt one drain, that would be fabulous. So, don't have to. So, don't have to, but I think it would be cool if you did.
Like I mentioned earlier, I ride the bus, and I walk up this steep 83rd place, and there are a bunch of drains there with a bunch of leaves, and I adopt them, you know? Because as I walk, it's like, ah, this is going to be bad in a couple of months with my foot. As I walk, I just sweep this thing. So, I hear you.
Kindred spirit there.
I might make it official, though.
Okay. So, see, it sounds like you'll be able to top five easy.
Challenge accepted.
It probably shouldn't shock us that we're civically minded up here, should it?
I was doing it before city stuff. So, what does that say? I have no idea. Easier to clean drains in your house. Maybe that's it.
There you go.
My dad would take me out as a kid, and we would go clear storm drains, especially during rainy seasons. We would get petals at the end of streets, intersections. And so, that was, that's been something that I've done my whole life. And I hopefully did not offend my neighbor by adopting our nearest drain. But I have a feeling it will be a shared endeavor, because I know that they're really on top of it, too. So, definitely have fun with naming, you know, get some good puns out there, be creative. It's really can be a fun thing for families to do, to get your kids involved. And, you know, if you need to, share the job with a neighbor.
You know, it'd be really fun, you know, you're talking about working with neighbors. It'd be fun to see which neighborhood adopts the most drains. But that would mean staff time. But that would still be cool.
I'm curious right now how council versus everybody else in the community is doing. Like, I'd be curious to see that comparison.
Awesome. Just shout out to the couple that walks 145th and cleans 145th every single morning. They're out there, they're cleaning 145th. So, a special shout out to them. I just want to give a shout out to city staff. We've been on recess for, feels like forever right now, and everybody at the city has held it down. The amazing work that you guys did over summer with the festivals and just the vibrancy in creating a sense of community here has just been amazing to be a part of. You know, we're opening 45 soon. 42 is coming along soon. We have two new sports fields that have been redone, that'll be coming online here soon. It's just, it's amazing the amount of work that we've done throughout this summer. And I think that's to be celebrated. We don't often get the opportunity to say thank you to staff. So, I just wanted to make sure that our voices are heard, saying thank you to all of you for all the hard work and dedication each and every day that makes the city of Bothell welcoming and home to many of us. So, thank you.
Ditto.
All right.
Just to add to that, just, you know, we are only a couple of weeks off of our last Summer Night in Bothell event, and those were just amazing, you know, week after week, just new wonders. And, you know, all in thanks to the park staff and especially to Blaine Land for the event planning. I can't wait for next summer and to see those events expand and bring them back to the community. And I'm hoping that we don't have to necessarily wait until next June or July for more fun in downtown. So, let's keep finding ways to, to, oh, that reminds me. Okay, so, I meant to bring this up in a one-on-one earlier. But just so that we can continue keeping Main Street as a destination in Bothell, I've discovered that on social media, on mapping software, Main Street isn't a destination yet. You can get, you can look up addresses on Main Street, but often, you know, like, for example, you know, the River Walk in San Antonio, right? You can like Google River Walk, and that's a destination. You can tag it. You can pin it. You can, you know, do all these things as a way of, and yes, this is the millennial in me talking, that if we can't, if we can't get a digital footprint of it, does it even really exist? And so, I'd very much like to see some geo-tagging happening for Main Street as its own, like, destination, so that we can start and members of our community can start tagging that in their social media posts, on their mapping softwares. You know, ways to highlight and celebrate the fact that Main Street is a place to be, and it's not just a street where there's addresses on it, that it's actually the place to go. So, if I could throw that out there, hear your thoughts, how would we go about doing that?
I feel old now, because I didn't think about that at all. I think that's something good to kick around.
I was on Instagram, and I was like, why can't I tag Main Street?
For the gram. All right, I think, next up, we're moving into closed session pursuant to RCW 423144A, Labor Negotiations, No Action Expected, anticipated for 30 minutes, and which would be 9:27 PM, and we will adjourn from there. Paul, did I do that right?
Yes.
Okay.